Okay, call the meeting of Marshall County Commissioners. The order will start with pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, all. It's May 20th already, and welcome to all of our visitors. Again, we'll start off with Highway Department as normal. Jason?
Morning.
Morning.
For road cuts and board and aerial permits this morning, we have first CCI Systems. We have one for them, County Line, which is North Lake, 7315 County Line, Polk Township.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made second to approve the request from CCI Systems. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next one is NIPSCO to replace utility poles and overhead equipment and transfer of conductors, wires to new poles. Number one is Michigan Road, fourth to US 6, North Township.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made second to approve the NIPSCO request for Michigan Road. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Farmer's Drainage LLC. It's install a new drainage outlet to replace an existing outlet on Beach, 9B to 8th Bourbon Township. It's a road cut.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Jason, do you follow up on them to make sure when they cut that road that if it settles they, we don't wind up six months from now with a...
One more time, I'm sorry.
Do you follow up with them when they do the road cut to make sure like six months from now we don't, when it settles, we don't have a big dip in the road?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's times it just happens due to the soils that we have.
Right.
I know there's times when it's called in that it's six inches to a foot and literally it's about a two-inch drop, which is a big difference. But yes, we do. Community crossings, I think, are next. So you took the community crossings under advisement at the last meeting. Milestone had everything that was needed or required. That is the breakdown of the pricing for Milestone and... So I'm just asking to go ahead and proceed with Milestone and award them the contract for the community crossings 2024.
And that'd be the complete contract, correct?
One more time.
Complete contract, correct?
Yeah.
All jobs? Board, have a discussion. Are there any questions?
Take the motion to award the bid to Milestone for $1,901,806.31.
Second. Motion made second to award the community project in whole to Milestone Construction for the amount of $1,901,806.31. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you have any idea, they ever give any idea when they might be in the county starting, by any chance?
I mean, I'll know more once I talk with them.
Okay.
But I would hope within 60 days.
Okay.
I know the one year for COVID, that was a little bit of the unusual where it really got prolonged quite some time, but I really don't foresee it being that far out. Jim, do you want to do the RFQ opening for that?
Yeah.
I don't know how I got myself off track here.
We only got one apparently response for requests for proposals. Normally, we send these out to three or more people, and I understand we didn't. We just advertised in this particular case. And what's, we got one in from Chain of Lakes Services LLC. And as I understand it, Jason, they have bid previously through the annual bid process and been the only ones interested in doing this. So I just want to make everybody aware of that upfront when we're...
Correct. That was the first year we'd done that. That was the only one we got even on the annual bids.
And I, apparently, at this point, there's not exactly a dollar figure or bridge situation. It's kind of like they're just providing us with what they're going to charge given the various items. Is that correct, Jason?
Yes. Because that's how it was actually put out, was per square foot. So there really wasn't a specific amount for each bridge or how many bridges. It was going to be based more off of what bridge are calling for those type of treatments. So obviously, the timber bridges would be. And if we wanted to do anything on the ceiling or cleaning of decks, it was just a per square foot based upon how many dollars we had to spend.
So for instance, a timber bridge, power washing, square foot, unit price was a dollar five. Concrete bridges, square foot was a dollar. Maintenance of, for traffic on flagging per day, $2,500. Maintenance of traffic cone signage, $250. And they go on from there. But so it's basically power washing and then sealing and that kind of thing. The sealing is for power washing and sealing, A and A. I don't know what that is exactly, but $3.05 per item. And for power washing and sealing, B and B, $4. I'm not sure I understand all that, but that's the quote.
Are they doing all the bridges?
Do what?
Are they going to do all the bridges this year?
No, we couldn't afford to do them all.
Yeah, I know.
No. That's just, basically, it was spinoff of what we did the year, well, it'd be the last three years.
Okay.
Well, I think is what we actually did. So like I say, there'd be a specific amount that they were going to do. Obviously, the timber shimming and wedging is the most important thing.
Yeah.
To keep those decks shimmed and wedged.
I don't know whether the prices fall in line with what you've done in the past or not. So do we usually take that under advisement and have Jason review it and then bring back to the next meeting? But there's only one bid?
I would think so because it's like, is there a price for timbers, I mean, for wedging?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
I'd say you ought to take it under advisement, have him compare that, make sure that it's within, you know, a reasonable kind of thing and go from there.
Motion to take the bid from Chain of Lakes under advisement and have Jason review it.
Second. Motion made second to take the bid for bridge maintenance under review from Chain of Lakes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So Bridge number one, Yule Trail. I think I sent these out to you guys via email. It's the basic for the purchase of right of way. These are for Bridge one. Did I say that answer? Did I say a lot of them?
You said Bridge one.
You said Bridge one.
So that's for Yule Trail. That, like I say, that's the purchase right of way. That's basically just stating that you approved with what dollar amount they've given, and it gives the appraiser the right to go out and start pursue our purchase for that.
Do you need that, a motion?
Yes. It does have a signature page on it. And I think, just one, I think the president can sign that one. It doesn't have to be all three.
Motion to approve the purchase of the right of way for Bridge one, Yule Trail, with the president of the commissioners signing.
Has all the people agreed to this?
Well, I think it's the negotiation stage of it. When you're actually going to go out and talk to them about what that dollar amount is, then they can always, I don't want to say it, but counteroffer.
So it's making the offer of the purchase for right of ways on Bridge one?
Yes.
Motion made second, motion made in second offer, excuse me, to approve the request to go out and start making initial offers on right of ways. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Do we have an appraisal for the real estate? I mean, what's the basis for the offer?
It's just the price they give based upon what the market is. So if it's a tenth of nature...
I understand that.
Well, that would be through USI on their adjuster to go out on, based upon properties.
Somebody with some appraisal skills say this is what we should offer.
Yes.
This is what we just went through out on Elm Road and them other bridges.
Yeah, I get it. I just wanted, I just didn't know.
It's just the start of the process.
Yeah, I didn't know.
So like literally step one of writing it up and coming up with a dollar amount, then they'll go in negotiations, then that'll come back, then you guys approve that that's the dollar amount that you're going to go with and yada, 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 yada. 232, no updates for 232. 231, no updates. Bridge 12, working on the project design and plan. Terricon has been contacted to do the coring. That'll be on May 24th. Rose Road between 11th and 12th will be closed. Emergency vehicles will be able to access through if needed. Roadwork wise, reclaiming has begun. We are starting to prep for Rejuv Tech to spray hopefully this week on some of those roads. Calcium has been completed. Crack seal has been completed on Veterans Pioneer Overmire Drive. Due to weather, I know I originally said that we would try to get a section paid before we started on chip sealing. With the weather, I think we might shift that a little bit and get started on our sealing, then put the paving on the backside due to the fact I don't want to get shortage on emulsion and getting trucks in. So, thought I'd give you an update on that. Mowing, we have started on our highways, which would be Lincoln Way, Michigan's, those. Then the contractors have completed one round of mowing. As we all know, grass is growing very, very quickly. Denofa call for Project Bridge 108. We're in the scarring process to be completed. We'll submit the scores and supporting information to Endot for approval, proceeding the contract agreements with the top ranking consulting firm, and schedule a kickoff meeting. The EECBG grant, one of the two mandatory webinars have been completed. We finished that one on May 15th. That was over the David Bacon Act, or Davis Bacon Act, I'm sorry. And the second one is scheduled for June 12th. Just like a federal project, we'll have to do quarterly reports and submit those on tracking for progress. And the contract has been submitted, and we should be getting the PO issued sometime soon. That's all I got.
Anything for Jason?
I do not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a planning commission. Ty, we have a public hearing. Your ordinance amendment?
Morning.
Morning.
How are you all doing today? Good. All ready? So we've got 24 PCO 6 for Timothy and Joan Beamish at 4115. They're looking to rezone a portion of their property. They've got the parcel highlighted in light blue, the two yellow highlighted parcels, and then the subject parcel that we're here to talk about today is the one that's in green, highlighted in yellow, or yeah, highlighted in yellow with the red star over it. They're wanting to rezone that property from A1 to L1 to be able to combine their properties together. Essentially preparations for estate aspects. So it's all one parcel rather than, at this point, four parcels over two different zoning districts. So currently, they're have a A1 zone parcel on the west side with some access coming off the road to the north. And then they're wanting to rezone that from A1 to propose L1 Lake Residential Zoning District. They own the rest of these parcels over here to the east under the L1 zone. And so they essentially just want to make them the same zoning district. What does that entail essentially? You have the entirety of the list of permitted uses within the A1 Ag District on the left, and then the same list on the right-hand side, and it's noticeably shorter. So the applicant's preparing for a lot for consolidation, but in order to do so, they must, the property must be under the same zoning district classification. The majority of the property is zoned L1 Lake Residential with only a portion of the property being located within the Thayer's Edition. There's one parcel subject, which is the subject parcel that is zoned A1 Agricultural, and the applicant is wanting to consolidate the property in order to prepare it for as part of their estate planning process. So it's up for Commissioner determination. It went through the planning commission with a 5-0 approval, and TRC's recommendation was based on the information reviewed and provided by the applicant. The TRC and staff recommended approval of that rezoning from A1 to L1. Now it is up for your determination. We are eligible for our public hearing section as well today.
What time is it scheduled for here?
40.
Okay.
It's 45.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing on 24-PC-06.
Second. Motion made second to open public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anyone here wishing to speak on the proposal of Ty and join, Timothy and Joan Beamish on 24-PC-06, please stand, come forward, state your name and address, and tell us your opinion. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to close.
Second.
Motion made second to close public hearing on 24-PC-06. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to pass on first reading, 24-PC-06.
Second.
Well, actually, you're passing ordinance 2024-15 mending those zoning ordinance, isn't that correct?
So it's 24 PCO 6 and ordinance 2024-15 between the planning commission and the commissioners, just depending on which route you're looking at it.
So we're technically approving both? Is that what you're saying?
They are the same thing.
Huh?
They are the same thing.
Yeah, that's what I was getting.
Yeah. 24 PCO 6 is planning commission's designation, and then ordinance number 2024-15 is the commissioner's designation.
2024-15, correct, since commissioner's approval?
Yes.
Right, Angie?
Okay. I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to approve on first reading, ordinance number 2024-15.
Second.
Motion made second to approve ordinance 2024-15 on first reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I assume that zoning ordinance amendment looks like the ones you typically do for this kind of stuff.
Correct.
I don't remember seeing it, so...
I know Laura had sent it a few weeks back.
Okay.
But it's the same ordinance. We just change out who it is, where it is, and what the zoning district is.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and pass ordinance 2024-15 on second and third reading.
Second.
Motion made second to suspend the rules and pass ordinance 2024-15 on second and third readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That it?
That's it for today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
US 3031 Propel Coalition, Brett?
Would you please state your name and the company you're with? Absolutely. I'm Brett Lackey. I am a CDM Smith. I'm here on behalf of the Endot Propel US 30 West Pell Study. So thank you for allowing me a few minutes this morning on the agenda just to provide a brief update on the US 30 West study. Really, today I just wanted to kind of let you know where we're at with the study, discuss the alternatives development process, and then also touch on the comments that we've received from the county thus far. So as a quick refresher, I'm sure, I'm sure we're all aware, but the Propel studies include 180 miles of US 30, US 31. Our study specifically, the US 30 West study begins at State Road 49 Valparaiso, extends east to Beach Road along US 30, and it also includes a segment of US 31 from the US 30 interchange south to County Road 700. So the Pell Study process is likely different than, than what most folks are used to with past Endot projects. Really, this, this is an early preliminary engagement with stakeholders, and the studies are evaluating a planning horizon out to the year 2045. As a reminder, we don't anticipate that these Pell studies are going to identify a single, recommend a single build alternative. The studies will result instead in a, in a reasonable set of alternatives that could move forward as part of Endot's regular call for projects. Next slide, please. So right now, we're, we're kind of in between the level two and level three of a three-step screening process. The, the public comment period for the level two report ended recently. Within that level two public comment period, we had four community office hours in the area. 11 area libraries hosted that report for folks to come in and review it. And then we've had meetings with our stakeholder advisory committees as well as the different Farm Bureau agencies. Next slide, please. So looking at the schedule right now, again, we're in the second phase of the, of the three-phased alternatives development screening. This is known as level two. That's what we're wrapping up right now. The draft level two screening report came out at the end of March and was available for public comment through April 30th. So right now, what we're doing is we're working now to address those comments that we received and to finalize that level two report. But, but please know we will still accept comments throughout the life of the Pell Study. So given the size and complexity of the study areas, we, again, I've said this several times now, three levels of screening and potential improvements. At each step, there'll be a smaller number of potential solutions, but the level of detail will also increase at each step. So at level one, which is the universe of alternatives, we identified 55 improvement concepts to address the issues in the corridor. From there, we went into level two, and the purpose of the level two screening was to evaluate location-specific improvements for reasonability and potential impact. So the improvements that we're considering in level two are those that we identified in level one. And, you know, now we are looking at specifically the primary intersections within the corridor. And primary intersections more or less control the operations throughout the study area. And more specifically, they're those locations where US 30 or 31 intersect with a roadway that's designated as a major collector or higher. So with that in mind, we looked at over 20, we looked at 29 primary intersections within the US 30 West corridor. Of those 29, 14 are here in Marshall County. So looking ahead now at, at the work that we're beginning at level three, the level three screening will develop and analyze improvements, improvement packages for smaller areas or segments within the study area. We're calling these smaller areas planning segments, and that'll include the improvements at the primary intersections that we looked at at level two, but it'll also look at secondary intersections and basically all the roadway in between. So level three is where we really start to tie it all together and look at the entire US 30 and 31 corridors. So each of the primary, primary intersection improvements, alternatives that advance from the level two screening will be included in at least one of the improvement packages that we put together in level three. Level three includes both a qualitative and quantitative assessment of costs, benefits, and impacts. In level two, the, the alternatives screening process in level two really followed four steps. Step one was a decision tree assessment tool. This is basically a set of standardized questions that helps us identify the scale of the improvements that are needed at each primary intersection. This is looking at safety and operational data as well as public comments. Step two is a planning level of traffic operations analysis. Step three was a qualitative evaluation matrix, and this is, this is where we're asking a lot of questions. Does the alternative meet the original purpose and need? We're also looking at anticipated environmental impacts, relative costs, et cetera. And then the final step of the level two screening was a conceptual footprint comparison. The footprint comparison really was established to allow for a high-level estimation of, of the area of disturbance. And then, of course, with that fourth step, we were able to screen out and eliminate any alternatives that had a disproportionately high impact. So while the improvements that were looked at within the four different study areas do vary slightly, some of the common improvements that were considered in the level two screening specifically for Marshall County include access management alternatives, free flow facility alternatives, intersection improvements, and that can be as simple as adding or extending turn lanes, but also includes innovative intersections like RCI's, roundabouts, and green tea intersections. Crossroad, overpasses, and underpasses are featured prominently as well as interchanges. So on this map here, these are the 29 locations that were looked at for level two. Again, 14 of those 29 are here in Marshall County. I won't go through each of the 14 intersections, but, but they are listed here, and all of this is available on our website, which, which I'll touch on before I wrap up. Next slide, please. On the screen now is a summary sheet that identifies each of the alternatives advancing at each location or each primary intersection. So numbers 16 through 29 on the top row are specifically the Marshall County primary intersections. Again, this may be hard to see, but this is available on our website. And this, this summary sheet here has a lot of data in it, and it summarizes a good amount of what's in the level two report. So it's just a quick, easy way to hone in on specific intersections and see which alternatives are recommended to move forward. At this time, I did want to acknowledge the Marshall County Planning Study that Ty Adley put together with help from others. That, that report provided recommendations for the Pell Study and let us know what the county's preferences were for improvements here. We have been and will continue to refer to that study during the Pell, during our Pell Study, and it does inform the recommendations that we're putting forward. With that, I also wanted to acknowledge the letter that Ty put together for us with level two comments. We've received that letter. We're processing it, and we are working on a formal written response, which we will provide shortly. But in the meantime, I did just want to acknowledge the few locations that that letter called out as, as, as locations where our Pell Study was, was a little bit divergent from the county's preferences. From my understanding, those areas include the area from Queen Road to Michigan, which includes, you know, Oak and Pioneer Drive within that, as well as the King Road, 9A intersection, Fur Road, and Lincoln Highway. Our understanding is that those are all locations where the county would desire potentially an interchange at those locations. And just in general, a statement about interchange proximity. According to the Endot Design Manual, the minimum separation between interchanges is two miles in urban areas and three miles in rural areas. That said, we are, we are certainly looking at these locations again at level three and, and reevaluating those. Also in the letter, Ty mentioned some secondary intersections. I wanted to acknowledge that as well. Union Road, 12th and 12B, Beach Road and 14C. These locations are identified as just being important for connectivity and access, especially in the context of other area improvements that may happen in the future. So, you know, just wanted to acknowledge that we were aware of those locations, and we are continuing to look at those in level three in a little bit more detail. So as I mentioned, we're busy right now processing the comments that we've received, not just from, from Marshall County, but from others during the level two comment period. We're revising our level two report accordingly. Again, I wanted to mention the draft. The draft level two report is still available online to be reviewed, and we will take comments on pretty much anything on our website through the end of the Pell Study. So there's a QR code on the screen here that will, will take folks to our website, or you can just go to www.propellus30.com, follow the links for 30 West. You can see the full report there and some of the handouts that I shared in, in this presentation today. So we would encourage folks, as always, to just, to check out, check out the materials online and leave us a comment, and to continue to stay involved as we transition from level two to level three. So thank you all again for allowing me on the agenda this morning. We look forward to continuing to engage with you. If there are any questions from the council at this time, I'd be happy to, to field them. But otherwise, please just feel free to reach out via the methods on the screen here with any, any comments that you'd like to provide.
And this will be submitted at the end of this year to Endot?
The Pell Study itself will, is expected to wrap up this fall.
Okay.
So everything coming out of the Pell Study should be done by the fall. Our level three report, the last step of the alternatives analysis screening, we expect in late summer.
Okay. Then what happens?
And that's a, that's a good question. And then it, you know, we're handing the recommendations to Endot, and from there, those recommendations would need to become projects following the standard Endot project development process.
Okay.
Give me the name.
I don't.
First of all, thank you for coming in person.
Absolutely.
It's a lot easier to Zoom.
Sure, I agree.
And I do have one question. Is there any discussion because, especially like in Plymouth, where we're going to possibly shut down and reroute traffic, do some access roads? Is there any, if there are going to be any help with the cost to do this? Is that taken into consideration in the study in any way, shape, or form?
Well, the study is producing generally a cost estimate to the best of our ability. We're pretty... We're pretty, the Pell recommendations will, there'll be several. There'll be several tiers of recommendations is what we expect, and so, really, we're providing a cost, a general cost estimate for each of those improvement packages. What happens after that and what's chosen to be turned into a project is kind of out of our control once we've painted that off, but I'm sure that can be discussed, certainly.
What's the difference between a two-mile, difference between interchanges and the urban and three miles in the rural area?
That is, I'm not sure. That's what the Design Manual recommends for just the standard distance between, so that they're not too close together. There are certainly exceptions to that. That would have to be handled on a case-by-case basis. Well, as you know, the existing interchanges, there are certainly exceptions to that, but building new interchanges, there may be exceptions to. It'd just be on a case-by-case basis. It's a, yeah, it's part of the Indiana Design Manual.
And to follow up with Stan's question, so were there access roads that were looked at on some of these county roads where you're going to be three miles from an interchange to get across the highway to the farmers and school buses and emergency vehicles?
Oh, sure. Yeah. So, that's, all that will be wrapped up into Level 3, really, because Level 2 is specific to, you know, individual primary intersections. It didn't really get to that level yet, but Level 3 is where we were going to be looking at the overall access and, so things like frontage road, collector-distributor roads, things like that would be, would be part of the Level 3 analysis to make sure that we're maintaining access for everyone.
Okay. All right.
And that was also part of Ty's letter to make sure that the east side of Plymouth has access.
Yes.
So, that was part of our discussion. Greg Hildebrand, Mayor Robert Listenberger, and Attorney Jeff Huyan were all part of that discussion in developing the Marshall County and the City of Plymouth's response in our letter to NDOT.
Okay.
I think there's two main points. One, Oak Road, if they close it down, that traffic's got to go somewhere, and it's going to cost somebody a lot of money to reroute it. Okay? That's my point. And the second one to me is 31 South, South of 10, how we get, I think that industrial park plus the Amish on the south, getting back and forth across the road, and emergency vehicles, I think that's going to be a problem 20 years, 15, 20 years from now.
Okay.
And how do we get people into that industrial park, the heavy truck traffic, without routing right through downtown Argus, which is not equipped for that?
Okay.
So...
And Lilac Road
Yeah.
was discussed in our response, along with supporting frontage roads along 31, or 30, excuse me, on both north and south as possible alternatives to traffic.
I just wonder, who's going to take up the cost? I guess that's one of my concerns when we do this.
Fair enough. But obviously, you're aware of the 10 and 110 and 700 projects that are advancing on their own, so we're coordinating with them as they advance their design so that any recommendations from the Pell mesh with that. We are not analyzing that area ourselves for the Pell, since it's already being looked at, but we'll make sure any of our recommendations play well with what's happening there in advance of the Pell. The area you were mentioning just now was, that's between Queen and, more or less between Queen and Michigan, the area that, okay?
Yeah. Yeah. We're good.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thanks.
Next, we have Bowen Center. Lindy. Morning.
Morning.
Good morning, and thanks for having me. I'm here to go over our annual reports. So, the book that I gave has a lot of great stories that are from throughout all of our Bowen Centers, but I'm going to ask you to turn to the back page where we specifically have Your screen's showing there. The back page here, where at the bottom it says Marshall County 2023 Review. So, Marshall County, you guys give us the funds every year, so the $387,000. And what we've done with that during the 2023 year in total free care, we gave $720,000 in free care. So, we put a lot of it right there for those who are underinsured, not insured at all, lost insurance through, throughout, some people who needed extra services and just couldn't afford those. We employ 100 staff, and we put almost $6 million into payroll and benefits for those staff to keep them employed here in Marshall County. And then patients that we served, 4,041 patients, and we had 60,848 visits. I did went around back to the last Commissioners Meeting with Marshall County Hope, and I know it was asked by you, Kevin, on the funding. So, the three positions that Marshall County Hope funds are unique to any Bowen Center. No other Bowen Center has these positions. They only exist because of the grant funding we had through HERSA prior to this, and then the opioid settlement funds are helping pick up their salaries, and then we've also applied for some grants to continue that, so that way we can keep providing all their services for free to the community. No one has to be a Bowen Center patient. As for anyone who needs it, they're just housed with us, but we do cover their benefits. But it's just the payroll then that is taken, is covered then through grant fundings and then also the opioid settlement monies. A couple other things that I wanted to highlight that have been going on is, one, we brought the addition of primary care into Bowen Center through FQHC. That's been going very well. Alyssa Whitaker, who we know was here two years ago, is back in Marshall County now with us, and she is filling out very quickly, to the point where we're having discussion already of possibly bringing on somebody else for a second primary care provider. We also have our new building coming in that is right there on 31, across from Hacienda. That is about three weeks ahead of schedule at this point. Our goal is to be moving in somewhere in October. So, this is to, one, make it more accessible. Where we're at right now isn't as accessible being back in the back of a subdivision there. And also, we have two separate buildings, so it is cumbersome for some patients to show up at the wrong building and have to get over to the other. So, we'll have everything under one roof, including primary care. We'll have Genoa there, which is for pharmacy, so that our patients can meet with someone and get medications mailed to the home and get them all synced up, so they all come at once. Also, LabCorp, we have two days a week in our office, so no one has to go anywhere on those two days to get any labs drawn if they need those done. We'll also have a shell off to the side that potentially, in the future, to add either optometry or dentistry, depending on, once we get started and just kind of take a survey of the community to see what the need is in that area, and we'll continue to have our therapy services, groups, and our skills, community-based services. And the last thing I wanted to talk about was our Crisis Stabilization Center. This is something that we started piloting back towards the end of 2023 at our inpatient facility in Pierston. So, it is now opened up to all of the core counties, including Marshall. If we have somebody who's in a place that doesn't necessarily need to be admitted into an inpatient hospital, it's somewhere they can just go. They can just, it's a walk-in. They can stay up for 23 hours. They're continually assessed. There's places for them to sleep. There's reading TV computers for them to use, so that way, just to give that extra layer of crisis response. We also are working on crisis response mobile teams. This is very new for us, and right now, it is being piloted in Huntington County to vet that out and see how that goes. But the goal is that we will have, whether it's every single county, or we have just regions among the counties we're in, to have crisis response. So, if somebody's calling 988, then we can dispatch a team to go out and triage that and see if we need to have, you know, the police, or can we get somebody to where they need to go, or did they just need to talk to somebody and come up with a safety plan? So, that's in the near future. Any questions?
No.
You have anything?
No, I was just making the public aware that the $387,887 is a mandate by the state of what the county gives to the Bowen Center. So, we have no control over that dollar amount.
Thank you for what you do.
Okay. Thank you.
Part of the projects. Shannon?
I don't either.
I don't either.
Is that something we can do without her? Do we need to?
She is looking to start Phase 2 of the project. She did send a bill for the final two homes from Phase 1, House 1 and House 6, and that, we already have that budgeted out. It's ready to be paid. So, if we get approval, if I can get approval of this today, then we can pay this Brown and Brown invoice. That will take care of Phase 1, and then she was going to address Phase 2, have that be advertised, and then come before you guys. I cannot recall what meeting she was doing that at. I apologize. I don't remember what the email said.
It was in the email. I forgot where it was, too.
And I did talk to her a couple of occasions, so I expected her to be here this morning, so I'm not sure where she's at.
She's got four more homes ready to go out for bid, I think, under that housing project on Castle Drive, Lake Avenue, Plymouth, Sycamore Street, Plymouth, and Randolph Street in La Paz, according to the information.
So, she needs approval from us to open those up for bids?
Yeah.
I would need for you to approve the notice to the bidders, just approve notice to the bidders Okay. and the specifications, so we can proceed. Okay.
She said, on round 3, she's currently working on completing specifications for three additional homes to be bid in August.
I make a motion that we go ahead and approve the advertisement for these four homes, Castle Drive, Lake Avenue, Sycamore Street, and West Randolph Street in La Paz.
Second. Motion made, second, to approve, allowing Shannon to go ahead and put these out to bid the four homes previously stated. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And here she walks.
Come on up, Shannon. Come on up. You're on.
I'm sorry.
You're on.
You know, the weather's great, but guess what? Road construction has now started. How's everyone? Okay, well...
Shannon, please state your name and...
Sure will. Shannon McCleod, Priority Project Resources. I am the federal grant writer and administrator for several of the projects here. One of the projects that we are working on is the owner-occupied housing rehab project. We bid six homes in October, of which we awarded five. They are all complete, and everybody is just happy as all get out on that. One of the projects, we just didn't, the bid wasn't acceptable, so we've moved it to this second round of bidding. I think I sent to you, emailed each of you, a copy of the bid specs and then the proof of public, or the notice to bidders that we want to put in the newspaper. We are planning on bidding out four more homes. We'd like to advertise for bid this week.
We just approved that.
You did?
Yeah.
So, perfect. Perfect. Well, then, the bids will then be due on June 17th, and hopefully, we'll get some bids and get four more started. We are current, Brent's currently working on three more that we're hoping to have ready to go to bid late July and then get that work started. We had originally had 16 homes as part of the project, but given the time delays and crunch, we had four of those homes that are now, we're having to find replacements for. We also are up against the deadline with the grant, and so I'm in the process of working with the IHCD, that's the funding agency, to see if they would, if we had them ready to go to bid by October, so we'll try to find replacements. And we still have a long list. I mean, we had over 70 people apply, and we just have to go down the list in that order. If we can find four replacement homes, if they would allow us to bid them in October, and hopefully have them done by the end of the year, it may go into the spring. So, I'm yet to find out. I'm working with them, and they are entertaining that. So, I'm hoping that by the June 17th bid opening, I'll have a determination as to whether or not they will extend. I printed off this just for your, I mean, if you are interested. In the back of this packet is a list of all the homes and the, and what's the scope, and when we are intending on bidding. So, that's just kind of a little picture and kind of shows you some of the stuff that's going on there. Do you all have any questions for me?
Thank you. We need to circle back and take care of this invoice for Brown and Brown. I believe you want that to prepay, correct?
Yes, because, and all of this, just as a reminder, is reimbursed, we're, we will get reimbursed every time.
Yeah.
This one was kind of a little bit of a, since we didn't have any local match, and this is a reimbursable, we had to use some of our money upfront, but it will all be reimbursed, and we are in the process of getting both Brown and Brown and our first invoice reimbursed.
Do I have a motion to approve this invoice to Brown and Brown for $48,395 as a prepay?
So moved.
Second. Motion made, second, to approve the Brown and Brown invoice as a prepay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Wonderful. And then I guess it's okay to run the notice, so we'll take that, and I'll see you back here on the 17th of June.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much.
Was that everything, Angie, with this?
Yes.
Okay. I remember a prepay. I didn't make sure I didn't forget something else.
Thank you.
Well, that was quick.
See you later.
Next, we have Sheriff. I think I saw him come in. There he is. He's got his lake enforcement contract.
Good morning. We, again, are going to do the Lake Maxinckake Marine Patrol. We're going to, and we just want the grant agreement to be approved. It's the same thing as we've done in the years past, and they're looking at, the state DNR has committed $15,000 to the program, and of course, the rest of the money comes from the Lake Association, so there's no taxpayer money involved in this.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Lake Enforcement Contract Amendment Number 3 in the amount of $15,000.
Second.
Motion made, second, to approve the Lake Enforcement Contract Amendment Number 3. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope. I don't have any.
Thank you. Jim?
Attorney Report. Attorney Report. Okay, well, on to old business. Tamarack Solar, productive work session with Rick Hall on May 9th concerning a decommissioned agreement, some other portions of the agreement. Rick's to be forwarding you a revised draft for your review. If you haven't already received it, and I don't think you have, because I haven't seen a copy of it, so, but it should be coming soon. Jail repairs, we originally scheduled a follow-up work session with DLZ and JPR engineers for this afternoon, but one of the issues that came up had to do with the substance that was applied to the cracks of the cement panels, and I understand that we've been, some, I think Commissioner Olbermeyer's been in touch with the company that originally did something with those.
Babcon. They were originally down in Westfield, but their office is over in Columbus, Ohio now. And I talked to Andy, and he, for $1,000, they will come up and assess the walls on that, on the jail, since they built them.
If you'll recall, DLZ didn't give us much of an estimate because they had so many questions, and so, the idea, I think, is, is if we get this additional information, they may be in a little better position. may be in a little better position to tell us what's going on, and probably JPR will have some advantage with that as well.
I did talk to the head jailer down in Knox County, because their jail was built, I mean, our jail is identical to their jail, but they don't have any of this spider cracking on their jail down there. And he asked me which way the walls are facing. I said to the south and to the east, and he said, well, that's part of the problem, probably, and plus, we have different weather up here, too, so, but, you know, we can schedule them to come up here, and since they built those, they were precast walls that was put up.
Well, anyway, I canceled them off for this afternoon.
Right.
So.
We'll be discussing that contract a little later on.
Okay.
We've got it under Commissioner Ives.
Very good. And then, I dropped you a note. We can't appoint Terry Barnhart as an alternate to fill in for the BZA in the event we have a BZA member absent, and we needed to get a, fill a full BZA for a hearing, because she holds an elected position as if the Triton Schools. So I don't know whether you still wanted me to do a resolution just proceeding with Michelle, or you wanted to add another planned commission members, a possible BZA substitute.
I would continue with Michelle.
I'm okay with just Michelle.
Yeah.
She seems very responsible.
Yeah.
Little I know of her, yeah. Pretty reliable.
Okay. I'll finish that up for just Michelle, and we'll take care of that business. Kind of FYI, the newly appointed tourism board is scheduled to meet Thursday, May 23rd, at 5:30. I think that location might be at the Blueberry Festival.
Yes.
Meeting hall.
Yeah.
And I provided some information to the board concerning the powers of the commission, that kind of thing. Brian Teal, I know, is attempting to gather some information, and I'm gonna attend, emphasize to the new commission, we need to follow reporting requirements. There are certain responsibilities, both to the commissioners and to the council, and open, and to be open about the collection of revenues and the distribution, and I think that board will follow through smartly with all of that. Project Hope, I completed the MOU, but there was some questions that I guess the auditor had, and we got a response. As a part of the problem is, is that I think the, currently, some of the service providers for treatment and that kind of thing are paid by United Way, I think, is from the memo. But my contract was just purely with Project Hope, and they are a legitimate entity, Marshall County Hope. They couldn't use Project Hope because it was already copyrighted to somebody else, so they, their name is Marshall County Hope, and I have it set up, obviously, that they'll follow through with the requirements for, you know, reporting auditing, so we can make sure that the funds are used for those purposes that are allowed by the opioid, for restricted opioid purposes, prevention, education, treatment, and recovery. But, so at this point, I guess it hasn't been okay, but I'm, I don't know, I've got it set up that that's where the funds are supposed to go, with, to the Project Hope for those purposes, and to make sure they follow through with the reporting requirements that are necessary.
Angie, have you looked at this? Are you comfortable with it?
Yeah, I did have some questions, because the invoice came from United Way, and I was confused with United Way sending an invoice for Project Hope, why we weren't paying directly to Project Hope, and then Bowen Center is also making payments on that, so it's kind of, it just was a little bit out of whack. My concern was, when I'm reporting to the FSSA, my name's on the bottom of that, so I wanted to make sure that it was, everything was covered on using that funding for the intended purpose, so that when I'm doing the reporting, everything is clear.
So what's your, since you got an invoice from United Way, what's your paper trail that goes to Project Hope from the United Way?
Well, I would like to have the MOU say something about United Way in there, because my understanding from this is Bowen Center is going to pay the salaries from this, and then United Way, we're gonna pay United Way, Bowen Center will bill United Way, and then it'll come back to the Bowen Center, or through the, I'm sorry, Project Hope. So it was just a little bit confusing for me to make sure that I had a cover.
Yeah, but I'm wondering if, can't the Marshall County Hope, can't we just, can't they be invoice it and let them figure it out?
If Marshall County Hope were to re-invoice it, that would, that would be ideal.
So.
I mean, I'm not comfortable putting in here that it's going through the United Way or whatever. I think, I think that just sends a red flag to.
Yeah.
Somebody down the low rung. Wait a minute, what's going on here?
I would agree. That, that's where, I would prefer to see an invoice from Project Hope or Marshall County Hope, whatever the name is.
So, United Way is our fiscal sponsor, because Marshall County Hope doesn't have 501(c)(3) status at this point, so my understanding is we're gonna, I mean, the Marshall, so United Way is going to be housing all of our funding. Invoices will be sent to United Way, who will then do the reimbursing from the opioid settlement funds as needed.
But I think that causes somewhat of a problem for us for auditing. I mean, why can't you send us an invoice from Project Hope? We pay you, and then you turn that money over to United Way?
I mean, however, however the process works best for everyone, I think.
For auditing purposes, when State Board comes in, they're gonna, they're gonna question
that.
And if I can have a clear trail of where this is going, that would be.
Preference.
Yes, that would be preference.
Sure. Yep, I mean, we're all about making it work for, for everyone involved, so.
We're obligated to use the restricted funds for those limited purposes, and United Way may very well provide services like that, but they also provide a whole host of other things that we don't have contracted specifically with you to make sure that that's the case.
So does Marshall County Hope have a tax ID number, or?
At this time, we don't.
Okay, because you're gonna have to have, that will have to be in place as well, the tax ID number, because anytime we, any monies that are given to any non-government entities, we have to report that also on our annual financial report, so there's two different reporting requirements that I'm falling under, making sure that we have everything in line that we need, so I would need to have a tax ID number.
Okay.
Some, from Marshall County Hope before we can move forward on that.
Will do.
Are you in the process of getting one, or no, or?
I'll, I'll have to staff that with Linda Yoder over at United Way. She, so far, she's taking care of all of the financial side of things, so I'll get with her, and.
So anyway, I guess at this point, let's hold off on approving anything. If I may, need to tweak the MOU or whatever we may need to do, so.
I agree.
Well, we keep working on it, if that's okay.
Definitely.
Okay.
Thank you.
I made a note in my attorney report, by the way, that I saw the Center for Disease Control reported 2,190 less opioid-related deaths in Indiana in 2023, which was down 17% from 2022. So I guess there had been some, some success with using those funds. And then I also noted that Indiana, with its latest receipt of opioid settlement funds, has received a total of 925 million, so there's been quite a bit of money come in statewide. I can't tell you what we've got, obviously, much less, but, so, to some extent, I guess there's some good use of those funds. Then the other item of new business is Angie was at some conference and brought to my attention a House Enrolled Act that was approved at the last General Assembly, and I saw it as well. It has to do with whether or not the county wants to establish a local ordinance. I call it a contract statute. There's two pieces to the thing. One is, is that generally, it's been my practice, if I'm drafting contracts, to make sure there are certain things that this statute says should be in any contract that the county has with whoever. And in reviewing contracts, typically, I'm looking for those items to be in those contracts as well. For example, you've heard me complain about my pet peeve of terms of automatic renewal. You also note that lately with QCC, we've been trying to enhance the indemnification provision, so.
Have you heard anything from him?
No. But, so, the requirements under this, the statute suggests that here's what should be in a contract. I guess what I'm telling you is, is historically, if I've drafted it, those things have been in there. If I'm reviewing them, those things are typically looked at and addressed. But the General Assembly folks thought, well, you know, maybe the county wants to establish by a local ordinance that these things should be in a contract. If you're inclined to do that, fine and dandy. One of the things that, the second piece of this is, is that the statute also provides that elected office holders from time to time enter into agreements that they think that they are, and these are usually constitutional officers, are required to enter into. And this statute says that even in those situations, you know, if, if there's been appropriation, the county executive still, should still approve those contracts. And I don't know that it's come up much in, in the past, but once in a while, we have, like, the sheriff thinks he's got to enter into this contract and, you know, questions whether he really needs to come before this board to make that approval or review and approval. This statute says, if you adopt that local ordinance, you can clearly make it such that they come to you, or you could theoretically assign that authority to the constitutional officer for those. I've always taken the approach, this, you guys should be looking at those and reviewing those and approving those kinds of contracts. So I don't know if you want to consider this, approving a local ordinance that covers those two items, but if so, I'd be happy to draft it for your review and, and consideration.
I think it's all started over in Lake County. The sheriff over there had signed contracts, then something went south.
Exactly right.
And anytime, it's not gonna be the sheriff or the auditor, it's gonna come back on the commissioners. So I, I would be in favor of moving forward with the local ordinance.
It, it just.
It makes it simpler.
It basically says what I've always taken the position that commissioner's authority is, wants things like this and should do, and best practices.
Plus, if you have somebody signing a contract that you don't know anything about, who's gonna, you know, as, as elected officials change, are they gonna know?
Yeah. Which, which is my pet peeve on automatic renewal, is they sign a contract and then automatically renew, the next officer comes in, and, oh geez, I'm stuck with this contract when they don't want to be. So I, yeah, I, so I'd be happy to, can draft that up for your consideration and review.
I'm not opposed to it, but I would just like to look at one thing, because I've seen, there's been a bunch of lawsuits around the state where the sheriffs, commissioners of sheriffs has gotten squabbles, and the sheriffs have won some of them. So I just want to make sure we're not, you know, I don't, I want to know where the line is.
This is the State General Assembly.
Okay.
Establishing a statute that says this is the way it should be.
Okay.
So I, it may very well be addressing those court cases, and I don't know what happens if we get into that same situation, and the General Assembly said this is the way it should be, and the local, you know, commissioners say this is the way it should be, and they try to say otherwise. I, I guess we'll have to see what happens with that.
That was just my thought, because I know I've seen it happen around the state, and they've cited with the sheriffs in court.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that maybe the General Assembly is addressing that situation as well.
That's what they're doing, that's fine. I just want to make sure.
That was, from my understanding, this was to address some of those concerns, because there's also a requirement for auditors to upload contracts. Well, if we don't have the contract, I can't upload it, and this also would give a time limit. They have X amount of days to get it to the auditor, auditor has X amount of days to get it to the commissioners.
Okay, well, I'll start putting that together, so. And with that, Mr. President, that's all I have.
Want to have anything for Jim? Any more for Jim?
No.
Okay, that's, moving on. We have the audit report.
I have the May 6 minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made second to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the account payable claims.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the accounts payable claims. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Make a motion, motion to approve the payroll claims.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the payroll claims. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And I have True Roll, it's an agreement that I am looking to change to them. The auditors are responsible for deductions and making sure there are not people claiming multiple deductions in multiple counties. This is a company we have worked with, Tax Management Associates in the past. The agreement has ended with them. This is another company that is more up to date with that. It goes into an auditor's ineligible deduction fund. We can have a maximum of $100,000 in that fund. Anything that we recoup, a percentage of it gets paid back to the company that helped us, which would be True Roll, and a portion of it goes back to the state as well. So I would like to move forward with True Roll and get away from, or move away from Tax Management Associates.
Jim, did you look at this contract?
Yes, I did. I didn't see any problem with it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement for the auditor's office with True Roll.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the auditor's request and switch to True Roll, True Roll. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
How long is that? Is that a one-year contract?
It is a 24-month contract, and then a month-to-month basis, which is what Tax Management Associates was.
TMA was, okay.
Okay, next we have public comments. Anyone here have any public comments today? Yes, ma'am. Going forward, please state your name and address. Three minutes, yes. Remember, three, I'm sorry, three minutes for any public comments, okay?
Yep.
Janelle Prochnow-Naylor, 16541 Robert Court, Plymouth, Indiana, 46563. I have a few concerns from the citizens of Marshall County. One is, why didn't we look at Stan's Plan of Collaboration on non-biased attorneys to create the decommissioning plan? Instead of hiring Barnes and Thorberg, Rick Hall, who is pro-solar, why can't we use unbiased attorneys? And then, there's an article from the Wall Street Journal. This was on 4/23/24. I'm just gonna read a little tidbit of it. It says, "Current solar, wind, and battery technologies aren't advanced or cheap enough in many parts of the world to cost-effectively provide the 24/7 power data centers' needs. A single new data center can use as much electricity as hundreds of thousands of homes." I know this is gonna be brought up at the planned commission Thursday about data centers' agenda, and I'm sure you guys know about this new technology. I'm sure the economic development knows about this, but I'm gonna pass out some information for you. For those who can't see this, you can reach it on the Facebook page for Marshall County for Solar Regulation. And then one more thing, if anybody wants free meals or drinks, you can meet in Venergy at the VFW on Wednesday evening at 6:30. This is their indoctrination station.
Thank you. You have something for us, you say?
Thank you.
Paul, you, want to speak? Come on up.
Morning. Paul Ebbett, 16109, 18th Road, Culver, Indiana. Good morning again.
Morning.
I appreciate you guys letting me talk, only because I listen to what's going on up in St. Joe County, and they aren't even letting the people talk when it comes to all this database and solar and everything else. Citizens of Marshall County and property owners, it's your time to vote. The primary on May 7th, this coming Tuesday, holds the future of Marshall County, what will happen with your property and your rural landscape for the next 25 years. That was the beginning of my email I sent May 1st to over 200 people. We, the concerned property owners, reached out to all of Marshall County voters and the 500-plus property owners who've signed a petition against industrial solar plants in Marshall County. The vote was. in Marshall County. The vote was loud and clear, that the people voted for the candidates who were against industrial solar in Marshall County. Now, what will the next seven months hold for Marshall County? As two of our county commissioners will not be a county commissioner in 2025, will the agenda set for 2024 by our plan director continue? Establishing the industrial solar ordinances, battery ordinances, data storage ordinances, carbon storage ordinances continue? Even though the Marshall County voters have proclaimed in their voting to put a moratorium on all of these ordinances till we get it right for Marshall County. Hopefully, you, as our present county commissioners, will take a pause and listen to the voters. They voted for a moratorium. We, the voters, ask for you to put in place a moratorium today on industrial solar ordinances, battery orders, data storage, and carbon storage ordinances. Let's get it right for Marshall County. Oh, one more thing. Jim was just discussing it, so I'm ad-libbing right now, as he brought up that you're, you had some attorneys, outside attorney instead of our local attorneys on the decommissioning plan. And it sounds like you still haven't quite finalized it yet. And if I'm correct, one of our county commissioners has signed a conflict of interest. And maybe I'm not legal, but I don't think he can sign off on the decommissioning plan due to that conflict. You just stated, Mr. Clevenger, that you don't like these contracts that carry over year after year and continue. Because the new elected officials don't like them, but they carry over. So I guess I'd take that same comment that you made and say that Marshall, Marshall County voters have stated they want a moratorium. And we don't want to be stuck with the ordinances you presently are trying to push down our throat. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else?
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Laura Brockway. I live at 649 Blue Ridge Trail, apartment 201 here in Plymouth. I just have a simple comment, agreeing with a few others that have already spoken. I feel the people of Marshall County have spoken in the election on May 7th, and we do want the moratorium. And I really hope that you will honor that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have commission items. Marshall County Hope, do we need to do any more with that, Jim? Or you just, you gonna work on that?
We decided we needed to check that out and get back to you.
And as far as jail repairs, Kevin, you want to take the lead on that? You talked to Fab, Fabcon?
And they sent, I sent you guys a copy of the proposed contract for $1,000. You know, they built the walls, I think, for a thousand bucks to have them come up and say, yeah, we need to fix it, or no, it's normal.
Or make a recommendation.
Or make a recommendation.
Yeah. I make a motion that we approve the, the contract for $1,000 with Fabcon, who did the original design of the precast.
I will second that motion, but I'm assuming we'll get a report, correct? When they get done? We'll get some kind of report.
I'm assuming so.
Yeah.
I can second it.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'll second it.
Yeah, okay. I just.
I don't have nothing to do with Fabcon.
Okay.
And that's only for the president to sign. There's only one signature on here.
I amend my motion to have the president sign.
Thank you.
Motion made second to agree to the contract with Fabcon to come up and do an inspection on the jail for $1,000. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And let's see, with that, we have, do you have anything else?
I do have one thing. I have been having some health issues. I have had a surgery a few weeks ago. I have to go in for another surgery tomorrow. And I would like to step down from the Plan Commission. And I would like to have, make a motion to have Mike Burrows finish my term out through the end of this year. Because I'll be laid up for a while.
That your?
I'll second the motion.
Motion been made and seconded to have Commissioner Luthmeyer step down as Plan Commission and Mike Burrows take over. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I have one more thing. We just, Health Department just got some unrestricted funds in. Was it 7,100?
The opioid unrestricted, it was a little over 7,000. I think 7,147.
I would like to ask you guys to consider, since it's not restricted, it's unrestricted, that we would consider giving that to our DTF for buy money, as they're running short.
That will have, that have to be approved by council, too, for that? Will that have to be approved?
It would have to be appropriated.
Appropriated.
Yeah, so the council would have to appropriate, so it would have to go before them as an additional appropriation.
I'll make a motion that we recommend that the DTF receive the 7,000, whatever it is, of the unrestricted funds. We go to the DTF.
With council approval.
With council approval.
I'll second that motion. Motion made in second to use, what'd you say, $20,000?
Seven.
Seven, seven thousand.
Seven, it's around 7,000.
I think it's $7,147.96.
Yeah, something like that.
Okay.
Motion been made to use that unrestricted money for the DTF for their buy program. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And I have to apologize a little bit. I received a, it's a ruling on what the restricted opioid funds can do, and it's several hundred pages long. And if you go back to about page 112, and I know we've had discussions on what we can use that money for and what we can't. Totally, I lost it. I can't pull it back up. I got to get it again. But there is, it looks like there is a wide range of things we can use it for. It's just, we'd have to get it clarified. But I know in times, we've, we've talked about being pretty restricted. And I think it may be a little bit more liberal than we think it is, if we look at that page. But I, this is the last one I've seen, so. But like I say, I want to look at it a little farther and make sure before I get it to everybody. But that's what I, you know, just so we know in the future going forward. You got anything else, Mike?
I just have one other comment that the clerk's office has requested a two-hour lunchtime this Friday for the funeral of, one of their employees has a infant granddaughter that passed away. And that they, with the court's approval, will be closed two hours, maybe closed two hours this coming Friday to have the opportunity to attend that funeral. And they are, Jenny is checking with the courts for that. But I would offer our support for them to do this, this coming Friday.
And that will be from 11 to 1, correct?
Correct.
And the courts are closed from 12 to 1 anyway.
Yeah, courts are closed from 12 to 1, so.
And we've done it before.
Yes.
So do we need a motion for that? Do we need a motion for that, Angie?
It wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion made second to allow the clerk's office to close so the employee, so the employees can attend the funeral service of a grandchild of a former, excuse me, an employee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I have just, do you have anything else?
No, that's all.
I have one thing. I mean, I've sat here and listened to these couple people talk. Public has spoken. I guess my question to both of you is, is there any interest in a moratorium, like the, like the public's asked for?
I don't have any interest in a moratorium.
Done? Okay. I guess. I'll leave it at that. I'm not going to come any farther. I'll just get myself in trouble. Being that, for nothing else, motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second. Motion made second. We are adjourned.